Okay, I make that five o'clock, so we want to make a start. So Mr. Many, can I ask you to make the statement that you always make at start, please?
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children, Families and Communities Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being livestreamed. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn your camera off and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate? Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and requires standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated on the roll call for the minute, I would ask that members confirm their presence when I call their names. Convener.
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander.
I'm also here.
Councillor Anderson.
Present and good evening.
Yeah. Lord Provost.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Codel.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor Delnackla.
I'm present.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Rome.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Sors.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here. Thank you. Councillor Smith.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
Hi.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank. Councillor Crookshank. Almarca's absent.
No, she's.
No, she's here.
She's here.
Apologies.
I think there's a problem with IT equipment today.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor McKeer.
Present.
Councillor McHervan.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Scullen.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Okay. Bailey MacPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Creighton.
Yep.
I've received apologies for Councillor Duncan. Bailey Scott.
Here.
Mrs. McBean.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. Little.
Good evening, I'm here.
Yeah. Mr. Gibson.
Yep.
Miss Barclay.
Hello, I'm here.
Mr. Anderson McGinnis, sorry, Mrs. Javiet.
Present.
Mr. Anderson McGinnis. Almarca's absent. And Miss Orchardson. Also, Almarca's absent. And that concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. I do see in the chat that a couple of members are mentioning that they have one or two issues with the IT tonight, so I will try and be as patient as I can and hopefully everything works perfectly, but there is any issues, just put it in the chat and we'll make sure that we can get to you where necessary. But Elaine, can we start with the agenda, please?
Thank you, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Can I ask if any members have any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
No, I'm not saying MD coming in, and unfortunately I think my camera stopped working, so I'm just going to switch my camera off, but I don't see MD coming in.
Thank you. Item two, third religious representative on the Children, Families and Communities Committee. The committee are asked to agree the terms of the notes.
Okay, we're happy to just agree this note. Not seeing anybody saying otherwise, okay.
Item three, Tayside Plan for Children, Young People and Families grant fund update. I'd like to advise the committee that section five, priority one, should read early learning and childcare and not early learning centre as listed on the report.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Crookshank, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, convener. I've transferred to my mobile phone, so I'm hoping that you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you fine?
Oh, excellent, because I still can't get the camera on. Okay, I'd like to welcome this report and thank the officers for bringing it forward. I have a few comments I'd like to make. The plan, I understand that the plan will continue for twenty-four, twenty-five with fifty percent funding, however, there are plans to continue. Are there any plans to continue any of the good work that's started through the TRIC when there was no funding after March twenty-five? And just to point out that we've already seen a reduction in the SAC funding, and soon that would be coming to an end. I think this is the second or third year, we're getting reduced by one pound three million. We've lost thirty-three full-time equivalent teaching posts. What else are we going to lose from education? Thank you, convener.
Okay, I'll ask Mrs. May to respond.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Councillor Crookshank, for the questions. Possibly the first part of the question is more appropriate for me to answer around the work that would continue. So as committee is aware, the RIC has consisted of the three local authorities working together, that's Dundee, Angus and Perth alongside police and NHS Tayside. So that's been the partnership ongoing now for six, seven years. And the priorities that we work to have been the priorities that are contained within the Tayside Integrated Plan for Children, Young People and Families. And that plan, the cycle and the version of that that we're in the middle of just now goes up to twenty-twenty-six. So absolutely we will continue to work on these priorities beyond the funding at the end of March twenty-five. So I suppose what's the overarching message here is that we found a new way of working through the RIC work. It's work that is really paying great dividends in terms of adding value by working together in those partnerships and those collaborations, but also avoiding duplication. So with or without funding, I can assure you the commitment from the three local authority directors, our lead officers in Police Scotland and our leads for NHS Tayside have that commitment to carry on that ongoing working and to find ways continually where we add value by coming together and also avoid duplication. Also, lots of the work that we started all these years ago needed extra resource and extra people to get them kick-started, but as you'll know, a lot of this work now has become mainstreamed, embedded, and what we need to do is to continue to implement, and we do that at local level because we're all still responsible for our own local authority. So even with the reduced funding, we have had to pare back, but we've had to look at the work that we'd want to do in the spirit of real regional collaboration, and we'll continue to do that. I'd like to give our committee that assurance that the people in the leadership group that we work together with will continue to do that work, and we just need to look at what we can address this year's funding to and beyond that. What would we take from mainstream funding if we really wanted to continue some of the work? And as you can see from the report, the virtual campus is right up there as one of the priorities because it impacts this year on over a hundred and fifty young people, learners across both Perth and Gusan Dundee.
You happy with that, Councillor Crookshank?
Yes, I'm very happy with the response from Mrs. May, but following on, given that this was one of John Swinney's focuses when he was Minister for Education, would it be appropriate to go back to him, see if there'll be consider, given, you know, the previous cuts that were already taken, to reinstall this valuable element of improving our educational outcome? Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you, Councillor Crookshank, and certainly I see the leader administration wants to come in, and he will come in shortly. However, just to confirm, as you know, I think as many members on the committee are aware, we're not slowing going forward in approaching government. So certainly with the change of First Minister recently, as you'll be aware, we will be at the forefront of speaking to ministers and talking about what they can do to support the initiatives in Dundee. So that's certainly something that is ongoing and will continue to ongoing. And can I just say, I'm certainly welcome Labour support for TRIC, considering that wasn't always the case when we discussed this previously. So certainly pleased to see the change in tone from the Labour group and certainly for this, and certainly we will continue to challenge the government to support initiatives in Dundee. Bailey MacPherson, I see you have the next comment. You're on mute, Fraser.
Sorry, my apologies, convener. I unmuted myself and unmuted myself back again, which wasn't too clever. Anyway, thanks, convener. I'm glad that you're saying that you're at the forefront because I think we do have to be at the forefront in terms of the fact that we have to recognise that frankly this funding's falling off a cliff. Between twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five's funding, we're talking about a million pounds disappearing. And I do not doubt for one moment that officers, as exemplified by what Mrs. May had to say, will do everything they can to ensure that the good work of the Tayside Regional Improvement Collaborative and the good practice continues. But the reality is you're, you know, this year three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, next year zonk, zilch, nil. So I would specifically ask that the committee agrees tonight to ask that the chief executive or indeed the executive director of Children, Families Service, I'm not precious as to which officer it is, but one writes to, on behalf of the committee, to the new First Minister, Councillor Crookshank made a very reasonable point about the commitment that John Swinney said he was making to education, and I think it's really a case of ensuring that that commitment continues. And that commitment involves funding at the end of the day. All too often, I've been on this council twenty-three years, and all too often we have initiatives that create good work, that make real achievements, and then the punt funding is pulled, that happens far too often from Scottish government. And I think in this case, I certainly would hope that you would agree, convener, that we ask the chief executive or the executive director to write to the new First Minister. If you're not wanting to do so, then I'm quite happy to move something to that effect, but I don't see this as something that's particularly party political. We're all, all twenty-nine of us wanting to see the best for children and young people in the city, and I hope that we can agree that the chief executive or the executive director writes to the First Minister in that regard. Thank you, convener.
Yeah, no, thank you, Bailey MacPherson. You know, as I said, an apology, I still have my camera off because my camera doesn't appear to be working properly. As I said, you know, we already are starting making as part of administration representatives to government and more than happy if one of the officers, whether it's Mrs. May or Mr. Cogan, wants to do that.
I'm grateful for that. Obviously, I dare say the letter and the response in due course will be circulated, so I'm grateful for that, convener. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Alexander, you wish to come in?
Yes, thanks, convener. I think certainly supportive of that ongoing engagement. And as you'll recall, you and I both raised that with the Education Minister or Cabinet Secretary, I should say, on site of the East End Community Campus last time she was in the city. So we're not backwards and coming forwards. But I think it needs to, I need to make one further point here, given Councillor Crookshank's comments, because the changes that we've seen were supported in the Scottish Parliament by the Labour Party and were also supported through Cosla by every single Labour leader. There was one person that didn't agree or support the changes to attainment, and that was me. So I did comment at the time, I think it was on the back of comments by Councillor Mara, as he was at that point in time, that it's all well and good making, you know, making representations after the horse has bolted, but I think the support earlier on would have been far more advantageous. So the point I'd like to make is rather than simply writing to the First Minister, who, as we know, represents a minority government, I think we should be writing to every single party leader to make sure that the broader spectrum of political representation in the Scottish Parliament understands the ramifications for the decision that was made, because it was not made simply by the SNP, it was endorsed by opposition parties. So I would very much welcome writing to John Swinney, and as you've already said, we're happy to do that. But I would likewise hope that other groups were able to make representations within their own party structures, because that is the way in which we can make headway in this conversation. And I would also just want to make a couple of other points. Now, I've not shied away from the fact that I think that wasn't a good decision, and I made those points very clearly at the time. I think the city very justifiably requires more resource to tackle those issues, all related to social deprivation and some of those challenges that we all know very well. But it's also worth acknowledging how significant the education budget or the children families budget in the broadest possible sense is. It's approximately fifty percent of the overall council budget, increased by ten point one percent or twenty million pounds in the last budget cycle. And notwithstanding that point, there is continued funding that's devolved to our schools, which is making an impact. There's the expansion of free school meals, the extension of the eleven forty nursery hours, and all of those do have an impact. So I'm first and foremost always going to advocate for more resources, but it's also about acknowledging some of the good stuff that has been delivered across schools, nurseries in Dundee, and saying collectively that this is about broader representation and making sure all political parties practise what they preach. Thanks, convener.
No, thank you, Councillor Alexander. I think that was a point well made. Bailey Keenan.
Thanks, convener. Obviously, welcome the fact that there's an agreement to write to the John Swinney in relation to the cuts that he's making on this, and I'd obviously urge that we remind them of the cuts that have been made to attainment challenge and the number of teachers and staff that have seen themselves out of a job over the last few years to do that. I mean, the leader of the council can say, yeah, here's the money that goes into education, but the fact is thirty of your teachers got cut under his watch. That, as well as the attainment challenge has been cut endlessly. And whilst he says, and having got a problem with him, he was maybe the only one that stood up in Cosla. It's like Turkey's broken for Christmas, though, when it comes to other authorities that look to get money for Dundee at the same time. And the whole thing was set up by the Scottish government to deliver cash to others and take it away from us. So I'm happy even to write to individuals in the Labour Party and seek that they address as soon as they have that opportunity. And it's good of the leader of the council to acknowledge that there'll be change soon and others will be delivering.
Thank you for that, Bailey Keenan. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Elaine?
Thanks, convener. Item four, senior phase leavers update.
Okay, councillor Crichton, I see you have a question, so I'll bring you in.
Thank you, convener. Thanks for the support. There's a lot of positive information, especially about positive destinations for our young people, which is excellent in our group, obviously support all the work that's going in terms of that. In terms of the kind of next steps, that was in paragraph six, they mentioned the implementation of the schools attendance strategy. Now, obviously, I don't think this is unique to Dundee, I think this is a widespread thing of a minority of peoples across Scotland, who have really poor and low attendances. And I was just wondering if officers could give me an indication of kind of what measures are going to be taken for this inclusion, because obviously it is a matter of priority to get these kids back into school. And granted, it's not just for Dundee, I accept this is a Scottish wide issue, but just what are we doing in terms of the council?
Okay, I'll pass over to Mrs May in the first case, but you might want to pass other officers.
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks for the question, councillor Crichton. I will pass to Paul Fleming, that's head of education, to answer that one. Thank you.
That's great, thank you for the question, councillor Crichton. We actually, in Dundee, as part of every Dundee learner matters or focuses, you'll be aware on our three Ps, to ensure that all young people are present, participate and make progress in their learning. So presence, which is about school attendance, but not just that, it's about making sure when young people do attend, that they are engaged fully in their in their learning as well. So it's a key priority for us. And actually, timely, I probably would have been able to answer this better after tomorrow. But we have a head teacher learning together development day tomorrow, where our first two hours is focused on developing and finalising, if you like, the draft of that actual attendance strategy. So we have Education Scotland as a team advisor in attendance tomorrow to share the latest and best research based on the national policy, national guidance, learning from elsewhere. Our head teachers will then work together to develop that. I see David Gibson online as well, we're working very closely with our unions because the reasons for poor attendance are multifaceted, there are lots of different reasons, so we have to work, it's not just with us in education, we're very closely with our social work colleagues as well, with our CLD colleagues too. So it will be an all encompassing strategy, which we'll be implementing from August 2024 to improve school attendance. One thing schools will do individually, though, is every single school will have a school inquiry group, and every single school must have a school inquiry group focused on improving the school attendance of young people in the school, given the high priority it is for us as the city. In addition to that, we'll work very closely with our earlier sector, where attendance is not compulsory, to see how we can strengthen the use of data to get those good habits of school attendance in place before young people come into primary one. And of course, lastly, we need to very work very closely with our families as well, because it's obviously the parents and carers have a significant part to play in improving school attendance. So the attendance strategy is being developed over the remaining weeks of the centre and will be put into play fully from August of next year, and we'll look forward to update committee with regards to the impact of that attendance strategy as we move forward next year, councillor Crichton.
Okay, are you happy with that response?
Yes, thanks, convener. We just as a group look forward to hearing the strategy, and obviously, Miss Fleming and Mrs May can't say more just now. But obviously, we just spoke with this in our group, and there's a lot of great things in that report. And again, really good work from the education department as always, but just always looking forward to what we can do in the future. So we look forward to seeing that. And thank for your response, Mr Fleming.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Crokechank, I know you had your hand up, put it down and put it back up. So I think you were just in previously before Bailey Keenan, so I will let you in at this point.
Thank you, convener. I'd like to welcome the very positive report, that shows lots of improvement. However, I would like to ask about any specific work that's going to happen to target our care experienced pupils to improve the outcomes for them. And also, it's good to see the improvement in the cost of destination table five. And I'd like to know what I'll be going to do to continue that in Dundee, like the national average. Thank you, convener.
Okay, again, I'll pass Mrs May, but again, it's a special pass to Mr Fleming, so whichever one of you two of you wants to go.
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thanks again for the questions, councillor Crokechank. And thank you for observing the positives in this report as well and seeing improvements and recognising that, which is really reassuring. But I will pass to Paul Fleming to give you a detailed answer to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again, councillor Crokechank, for your comments and indeed your questions. So in terms of our care experienced young people, it's not a homogenous group, so we have, as you know, care experienced young people who are looked after at home, looked after in their children's homes, in kinship, in fostering ranges and so on. So we have a lot of different actions and plans in place to support our young people. We do, but as you referenced, we do have specific plans. What I will say is, within our school settings, working very closely with Glenn Lloyd, head of Children's Services, Community Justice and other partners, we have our MCR, so our mentoring pathways. And it's an award winning mentoring programme, we still have these in place in our secondary schools and our clusters. We have our PSWs, our people support workers for our care experienced young people only as well, we have those available in our clusters. We're further strengthening the champions board, which is a really important part of our Children and Family Services Improvement Plan, about giving voice to the young people and make sure we're not doing what we think is right. And the next step, we're listening to those young people to make sure we get it right for them. And that is heavily supported, our chief executive, our executive director, myself and Glenn both attend those as well. But as I sort of alluded to there, we're working very, very closely with across the council and indeed many partners to make sure that we get it right. So as part of what we're kind of terming edu care, myself and Glenn and our teams are working together to make sure that every single young person in the city, irrespective whether they're looked after at home, in one of our houses, or indeed in a kinship arrangement, that we know exactly the attendance, the participation and the progress of young people, and we're tracking those individually to get a consistency and a more consistent outcome for all of our care experienced young people across the city. The attendance strategy that I referenced in the previous question to councillor Crichton will also have very specific actions to improve the attendance of our young people in the city who are care experienced, because we are corporate parents and that is our responsibility. So hopefully that gives you a flavour in relation to care, in relation to care experienced.
Okay, are you happy with that, councillor Crokechank?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Bailey Keenan.
Sorry.
Sorry, councillor Crokechank, yeah, you finished? Yeah, okay, Bailey Keenan.
Thanks, convener. Mr Fleming really mentioned something there in relation to corporate parents and the role that we play as corporate parents. And I think it's fairly important that we should look at positive destinations. And I might well be the one that's a bit cynical when I read the sort of positive destinations. And in this report, it looks extremely good and that we've improved. Yet last month, we had a report at City Governance Committee, step change in positive destination for young Dondones. And within that report, it mentioned that we have the lowest positive destination outcomes of any local authority in Scotland. So, you know, whilst we read on this report, it's looking marvellous. We had another report last month where it looked terrible. So, you know, what's the bit the ordinary Dondones should be looking at? And, you know, what's the real difference between these two reports? One saying, you know, we're the worst in Scotland, and this one saying this is marvellous and isn't it good, we've made a real difference? Because I think the ordinary members of the public need to understand, you know, what are we focusing, what are we working on?
No, I think it's important that we all understand that as well. So Mr Fleming, do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, convener, thank you, Bailey Keenan, I think it's a really, really important question. In education, Scottish Government publish twice a year, they publish information, data related to positive destinations. And that information is what HMI, His Majesty's inspectors will quality assure and evaluate a school on, that dataset. That dataset is taken every year in October, and it looks at the initial positive destination. So it's called initial lever destination. So it looks at the positive destinations of any young person who is a school lever. So whether they left in fourth year or fifth year and sixth year, it will look to see if they've gone on to a positive destination. So that is the dataset that our schools are judged on, for want of a better phrase. So for the data that's in your report, it's data from October 2023, and it's looking at all of the young people who left school in 2022 and 2023. So it's a dataset that's published nationally, the Scottish Government publish, and it's a dataset that Education Scotland, His Majesty's inspectors use to evaluate the effectiveness of a school. So that dataset is the one where 13 local authorities went down and Dundee's improved. And Dundee's was the second highest improvement of all 32 authorities. So our young people leaving school in S4, S5, S6, they go on to a positive destinations. Wider than that, SDS, Skills Development Scotland, work with Scottish Government, and they look at the wider cohort of 16 to 19 year olds. So it's not just the ones that have left school, they look at all 16 to 19 year olds in any particular local authority. Those young people may be in our schools, those young people might have left when they were 16 and are still in university or college at 19, they might have been in four jobs or they might have left. It will also look at young people who've maybe come down from Aberdeen and went to Dundee Uni, and those young people might be 16 to 19, but they're in our city. So it's 16 to 19 year olds who are living in Dundee. And that's the, that's the data that you saw in the previous report that went to, I think, the City Governance Committee. That's looking at the wider cohort of 16 to 19 year olds at snapshot in time, that's published every August to do two interim measures. And that's looking at those who are still in a positive destination, whether that's school, employment or training. So some of those young people who leave school to go to college, they may drop out after two years, and that won't be counted positively, obviously, in the SDS one. But the report you have before you tonight is the school's first job is to get that young person into a positive destination. And then our job as a city is to make sure that that's the right one, so that we sustain a positive destination. And all young people moving into the city also get a positive destination. So hopefully that helps clarify the difference between the education participation measure and the SDS and Scottish Government wider 16 to 19 year old participation measure.
Okay, Bailey Keenan, you want to follow up?
Thanks for that. I'll obviously raise my concerns with the authors of the other report. Obviously, I'd want to see how that was fed in and, you know, how we monitor people, you know, if education only monitor for two years and they monitor a bit more, I would obviously like to, that's at level of clarification. But perhaps Mr Presswood would be the person that should take the question to.
Yeah.
Paul's looking to come in again, I think.
Yeah, Mr Fleming?
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you very much. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So obviously, our school's initial job is to monitor the young people in their care. But actually, as a city, our head teachers are again senior leaders in city, and I have been involved in Mr Presswood's boards all along and worked very closely with him, as has Mr Lloyd, who's on the call as well, to look at going, how do we get, and I see Marie Daly here too has been involved in that group, how do we all work together to make sure that our young people leave school and go on to the right opportunity at the right time for that young person? And so that they're not just leaving school at the end of fourth year, but that's something that they're going to stay in a positive destination for. And that work starts at a really early age, not just in secondary school. So that plan that was presented at committee, we are fully involved in and fully support, and schools will play a key part in that as well, our CLD colleagues and others in children's services, to make sure that our young people are tracked from while they're in school and all the way and beyond. But we all need to work together to do that. It's a city's job to do that, and we're fully bought into that as an education department within the Children and Family Service. Thank you both.
Okay, thanks, Mr Fleming, and thanks, Bailey Keenan, for the question. I don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so with that, cannot be approved? Okay, Elaine?
Thank you, convener. At this junction, external members of the committee will depart. It takes us to item five, Education Scotland Community Learning and Development Progress Visit Report. And you have the report before you.
Okay, thanks, Elaine. Before I bring in members, I just want to say, I think this is, obviously, this is a really good report, and I think it'd be appropriate for the committee, and I hope all the committee agree that we should be saying our thanks to all the staff who, in our communities department, for the work that they do. This report, this inspection report is, you know, the highest grade possible that you can receive. And indeed, you know, I know that several of the things that the committees team do have been identified and put forward nationally for effective practice, and I think that shows great credit to all the work that the staff do. So hopefully, speaking on behalf of the committee, that we can make sure that's passed the staff our thanks for the work that they do and the support they do. You know, councillor Smith and I have gone out to see several of these initiatives for ourselves, and we'll be doing some more in the future. I think one of the things that kind of we certainly reflected on was speaking to service users and the impact and the support that all these initiatives help them with is truly transformational. And it was quite emotional listening to some of the support that the service users get and the changes that's helped to their lives. So I think this is a really fantastic report, and as I said, I think staff should be commended for all the great work that they do. Councillor Coleman, I see you come in first.
Thank you, Mr convener. I insist to echo much of what you said, is calling to say that this is a very positive report indeed. And it was extremely reassuring to learn that Dundee has merited the highest grade. I think we all knew that the leadership of community learning and development was strong and effective, but it is good to see Education Scotland recognise this. So on behalf of our group, all staff volunteers deserve much congratulations for this and for the continuing good work and work being undertaken at the moment.
No, and thank you for that, councillor Coleman. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, convener. At the risk of echoing what you said even more, I'll carry on. It's just this report recommends that we note the outcome of the visit and we acknowledge the work of the Community Learning and Development Partnership. And I think maybe we should be saying we celebrate the work of the Community Learning and Development Partnership. I mean, this is basically saying the leadership's strong and effective, that we're tackling poverty and inequality in a highly effective way. The community planning partnerships are active and engaged, new Scots are much more integrated into the community and have increasing networks of support. It's this fantastic line where it says, there were no areas for improvement identified. You can't really do better than that. And the great thing is, there's three areas of work where they're going to be working with Dundee so that we can develop case studies for national improvement. So it's just a brilliant report, well done to all the team. And please, Marie, make sure that everybody really hears how pleased we are with what you're doing, you're making a real difference.
Okay, no, thank you for those comments, I'm sure that will be passed on as well. Councillor Crokechank?
Thank you, convener. I'd like to echo the sentiments of the former speakers. An excellent report it is. And myself coming from a background of community education, I can see it coming full circle where we are working with people as opposed to doing things for people. So excellent work, keep it up. And here we go, community empowerment, in my days was called community development. But I'm happy with the name community empowerment, if that's what, you know, that's what the, never mind. Excellent report, thank you very much.
No, and thank you for those comments as well. Councillor Alexander?
Thank you for indulging me, convener. Just to add to what everybody has already said, one of the, there was many highlights, I suppose, of neighbourhood services that I enjoyed when I was previously a convener of that department. But communities, in particular CLD, was always one of the particular sweet spots, I suppose. And of course, I'm also reminded of the fact that I was the first young persons champion, although those days are long since gone, and councillors Coleman, well councillor Coleman, I think, has stolen certainly the crown of the youngest councillor. But notwithstanding those points, I think it has always been clear in my mind that for such a small team, they really do punch above their weight and their extensive work to support young people, many of whom suffer the challenges that we know are alive and kicking in every single one of our communities, whether that be related to domestic issues or issues of poverty or some of the issues we've been talking today in terms of educational attainment. But our CLD team know these young people, they work with them, for them and in support of them to realise their full potential. And I think what comes through very strongly through this report is that we are blessed to have such a forward looking expansive in terms of their knowledge and also their proactivity in that broader agenda. And again, I just wanted to add my thanks for everything that they do. Most often, they're not under the radar. But it is incredible to see this kind of report and acknowledgement of something that I think many of us already knew to be true. Thanks.
No, thank you for that. And as I said, I'll ask Marie to make sure that all those comments are passed to staff so they are aware that the committee certainly recognises all the good work and appreciates all the good work that staff do. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so can this report be noted? Okay, thank you. Okay, Elaine.
Thank you, convener. Item six, review of Dundee scheme for the establishment of community councils, and you have the report before you.
Okay, we have a report in front of you. And this is just really for noting, it's just the next stage of the consultation. I'm not seeing anybody wanting to comment, so can this just be agreed? Okay, that's agreed. And with that, I think that's the business. So thank you all.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Regeneration, Housing and Estate Management Committee.
Good evening, and this has started. Elaine, over to yourself.
Thanks very much, convener. Item one is declaration of interest. Are there any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
Give a few seconds. Jacks, Councillor Finnigan, please. And Councillor Shears next.
Hi, it's just for transparency to say that item three, my address as well as addresses identified.
Right, thank you. And Councillor Shears?
Yeah, my street is on item five, so just a declaration in there, non-financial, just in case.
Right, thanks very much, Pete. And Councillor Crickshank, I see you've got a question? You're muted, George?
I'm not having a good night with technology here.
You have a question, yeah?
Yeah, just to say I'm grateful for the briefing I had from Rilo and the executive director, Tony Boyle, this morning.
Sorry, Georgia, we've not started yet, we're still doing declarations at the moment.
All right, sorry.
Sorry, sorry about that, I thought you heard a question, was something else. Sorry about that. Elaine, can we just move on, please?
Thanks, convener. Item two, housing repairs and reelect recovery plan, and you have the report before you.
However, the report informs to approve the proposed approach to addressing existing backlog in housing repairs. And the focus is on making construction services focused for twenty weeks to reduce the void number of working with along to modernise and design and delivery of the repair service before us. So I see, well, Kevin, I see you've got an amendment, so I'll ask the committee services to put that out and I'll go to Billy McPherson, I'll come back to you later, Kevin, they're talking.
Thanks, convener. I actually asked this question of group leaders and I would be grateful, because I've not heard further, and I would be grateful for clarification. It doesn't, it's not necessary that we get this for the purposes of agreeing to this report. It's more from the point of view of information because that financial implications in para three indicates where the costs are going to come from, to the point, to the tune of four point eight, four five million. What the report doesn't actually indicate is what's actually going to be spent on. Now, we know it's on on the general principle of necessary repairs and maintenance work. I think we all understand that. But what is not there is a breakdown of the types of work, cost per trade, for example, the 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 split between various trades, but also if there are any other costs included in that four point eight, four five million, such as, for example, IT costs. And I think it might just be useful if we could have the feel like the other side of the equation, we've been given the full information on where the money is coming from, but where specifically the money is being spent. I think it would be helpful if that is circulated to members, convener.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll just ask that circulated, maybe actually we could get done, because it's going to be quite difficult, I suggest, Billy McPherson, with regards to the trades especially, because I think it would depend on the type of work. But I'll bring in Mr. Boyle just to confirm he will get a breakdown and all letting members will get that once it's available.
Thanks, Billy McPherson. Yeah, as you intimated, it's a difficult thing to quantify, but we'll certainly provide a response to Billy McPherson.
I'm I'm grateful for that. I understand that you're not going to get this dumped to the last tenor on joinery as opposed to plumbers or whatever. But the bottom line is, I think it would be useful if there's a little bit of information as to where the four, it's a lot of money, four point eight, four five million. May I just make the comment in responding to Mr. Boyle's helpful reply, that I think the report is generally very positive. I think we've all had concerns over an extended period of time about the backlog in the repair service. And I congratulate officers for coming forward with this because really having a real prejudice over a relatively short period of, what is it, twenty weeks? I think if if successful, and we obviously hope it will be in reducing that backlog, I think we will see a step change in the complaints we get from tenants a lot, which is about things that have been reported but weeks on haven't been repaired. So, you know, I I don't want to appear in any way negative about this. I think this is a positive report coming forward, but I'm grateful to Mr. Boyle in saying that he will bring forward a degree of information as to where that money is going to be spent specifically. Thank you, convener.
No, thank you, it's no problem at all. I think as we move on, Housing Best Value Group will report back on the performance as well with regards to the the voids and the reelects as we go forward, which is a positive. Just going back through here. Councillor Crickshank, you had a question, I think I'll go back to that. Was that to yourself again, regarding this report?
Yes, it's regarding this report.
If I do the question first, George, if that's okay, then we'll come back to the amendment shortly.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Like I was saying, I was grateful for Rilo and Tony Boyle meeting with me to give us an update on the on the report. And like the previous speaker said, it's a positive report, but it's something that's been in the making since twenty twenty. I remember speaking about it when David Simpson was still here. But it's good to see it in black and white and that the actions, the actions are not just action, but they're going to be implemented. And I know there has been some good work happening. And for example, the voids at five point four were five, four, two. Sorry, and they've been reduced to four ninety, including the complex voids. But today, when I met with Ree and Tony, that's further reduced to four five five since the rating of the report. So that's excellent as well. I suppose the question is, at five point one, the focus on improving repairs in the reelects performance, the mitigated finance or another impact. A range of measures have been put in place, including utilising overtime to increase the number of trade resource to catch up on the backlog, subcontracting works packages and an equipment drive to grow the workforce in key areas, key trades where are recognized shortages. And if I go back to page one, the staff costs, defer the filling of staff vacancies. If I could have an explanation on that, please, thank you.
Yeah, I think I'll go back to Tony in the first instance. Tony, can you want to just clarify what the staff are referring to here rather than actual trades, please?
Yeah, thanks, convener, thanks, Councillor Crickshank. As you'll see, in point one of the report, we talk about staff costs and deferring the filling of staff vacancies at two hundred K. This relates to simply a deferment of recruitment at this stage, because at the same time as we're doing this, we're looking at the introduction of increased technology around Sodica and a thing called Total Mobile, which looks at duplicative function. So that will explain why we're looking at this moment in time to allow us to focus on the crucial aspect of repairing reelects going forward, convener.
Okay, thank you. Is that, answer your question, George?
Can I have a supplement, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just in terms of the IT, what are we doing in in terms of those that are not that are digitally excluded? And not everybody, you know, knows how to use a computer or whatever. So what what action are we taking to ensure that they they get the same?
Very good point, yeah. A very good question and I think it's going to be addressed by the officers with generally with IT across the council. But again, Tony, were you okay with this one?
Yes, convener, and thanks, Councillor Crickshank. Yeah, we're aware that there's a distinct cohort within the residents who are maybe not IT literate or used to using that type of technology. So we've been looking at how we support our own staff for additional training, customer services, and also to support those residents through contact by phone to support them in inquiries, probably.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I see Billy Keenan, you have a question as well? I think, yes.
Yeah, the question's in relation to the the half a million pounds worth of staff that will switch over the capital plan. And and as to how, what led to term we're talking, because that would be five hundred thousand pound going on the housing revenue capital plan each year and likely only paid off at a rate of twenty five thousand, because that would cover the the loan charge. So we'd be growing the growing the capital plan by four hundred and seventy five a year. So what's what's the avenue about trying to get rid of that and starting to meet it for revenue again?
Tony, are you, you want to pan that on to someone else?
Yeah, but that one, I think, convener, thanks, Billy Keenan, I'll pass to Olga in the first instance, Olga Clayton, from Head of Housing Construction.
Olga, are you there?
Yeah, yes, Graham. Okay, thank you. To reply, it is very common to include staff who work solely on capital programmes in the capital budget. We do have space in the capital budget because, as members will be aware, it has been underspent and this is a legitimate cost. So in conjunction with colleagues in finance, within this report, we say that we are reviewing the housing capital programme. And as part of that, we'll consider what costs should be included and capitalised on ongoing basis and which shouldn't. And I hope that answers your question, Billy Keenan.
Thank you. Also, so Mr. Thompson put his hand up. Paul, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, convener. Just to confirm that the financial implications that are included in the report only relate to the current financial year only. So these are for for a one-off. And if there was any requirement to continue funding these additional costs through capital, as Olga's already explained, as plan be done, then that would be factored into the next review, the HRE budget that we would intend to report back to committee in due course.
Right, thank you for that. To answer your question, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah, well, it says that we'll grow the we'll grow the debt by four hundred and seventy thousand, but, you know, we need to address the problem, so I'm I'm not going to divide on that.
No, thanks very much. I I see your amendment there. I think we'll take maybe a five minute recess, because it's quite indecisive. Do you know what, I can't see it on my computer I've got at the moment, I'm going to have to look at another one. So I think we'll take a five minute recess and come back and then we'll let you speak to the amendment then, if that's okay.
Cheers.
So we'll return at five two, roughly. Okay, thank you. Confirm maybe one's back at that time. Elaine, could you check to make sure everyone's back, please? And can we take off the screen as well, if that's okay?
Thanks, thanks, convener. Everyone has returned to the meeting.
Right, thanks very much. Thanks for that, everyone. I think it was helpful to just have that be a few minutes just to read the amendment in detail. And I'll go back to Billy Keenan to speak on it and come back to Councillor Crickshank after that for a second. Kevin?
Yeah, okay. I thought the the motion itself's relatively self-explanatory. Obviously, we raised five issues previously. A number of these have been addressed and obviously we have the action plan to address repairs and we have the action plan to address the voids, which is to be welcomed. We also have changes that the government has made to land in valuation tax that, you know, would make a difference. And I suppose I might want to look at what we've actually paid over the years to them and wouldn't it be a bad idea to ask it back, given that the government obviously made moves when they applied to the UK government to get VAT back that was spent on police and fire? I think that whilst we bring the voids in and haven't spoke to officers, that when we reduce the number of voids, we'll have somewhere in the region of another three hundred families and houses and that's to be welcomed. I think the facto that we've got seven thousand eight hundred or thereabouts on a waiting list, even bringing these boys back in is going to make a real difference, knowing that the government's cut the the affordable housing grant is going to have an effect on Dundee and the number of houses that it's able to build. And we need to accept that there is a housing emergency and go about making, doing whatever we can to address the problem. Indeed, that would be speaking to government and looking for additional funding and for them to reverse the cuts that they've made in the affordable housing grant. So I'll leave it at that. I was hoping that there would be a cross-party agreement on this, given that I've heard others obviously make the comment that, yeah, there's a housing crisis.
Okay, thank you. Billy, sorry, Councillor Crickshank, we promoted you then, sorry.
Thank you, convener. I've done a fair bit of research over the weekend in relation to the Solace Report and the Scottish Housing Regulator, who in December twenty twenty three.
Sorry, Georgia, having IT problems, I don't know if you can hear us, but you seem to have frozen. We'll give it a few seconds, see if it comes back.
Sorry, are you still there?
You just came back there. You just came back, sorry. You froze just after you mentioned regulator.
Right, it's, it's great. Right, it's, it's great. Uh, that is systemic failure in the delivery of some local authorities, uh, people experiencing homelessness. By this, the meaning of honestly, the technology tonight is absolutely cracked. Um, experiencing homelessness by this, they're, they mean a risk that the demands of some local authorities could, uh, shortly exceed their capacity to respond. Uh, and furthermore, this is the, the case in Dundee City. Now, we don't acknowledge, well, the first, the first part of acknowledging that there's a problem, uh, is halfway to solving the problem. Um, so I would expect that there would be cross-party support and calling this, uh, housing emergency. And I'm going to read from some of, uh, Shelter's uh, draft education for a motion. Um, just to, to, uh, to highlight the, the, the comments that, uh, councillor, uh, Keenan has made, Bailey Keenan. Uh, commit to the creation and implementation of a housing emergency action plan, which will draw together existing strategies and council teams aligning these behind the shared board attacking the housing emergency. And as we've seen tonight, uh, the report put forward from, uh, Turney Boyle, um, in, in respect of the repairs and relets, uh, it's beginning to happen, but there's further stuff that needs to happen. And we need to take into consideration the human rights-based approach to delivering the action plan, embedding participation, accountability, non-discrimination, empowerment and legality into the process. And commit to working with communities, individuals that lived experience of the housing emergency, uh, and internal and external part of deliver, to deliver the action plan and develop solutions to the housing emergency. Uh, I call upon, uh, this committee, uh, to agree to call in this a housing emergency. And let's get on with the work that needs to be done to get us out of this situation. Uh, and furthermore, for calling on the Scottish Government to reverse this position to put the Affordable Housing Programme and make additional funding available to help the council address the housing emergency. Thank you, Kevina.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, I T was quite difficult there, so I found it quite difficult to hear what you're saying, so hopefully others found it easier, but myself it was quite difficult. So I'll, I'll take on board and go from there. Uh, I've read the the motion that's been put in front of us in the amendment, sorry, and I am minded at the moment not to declare a housing emergency. I think, uh, some of the points you've raised there, Bailey Keenan, were actually pertinent, the fact that we're actually making progress in what we're actually doing here. I've actually written to the Housing Minister and the D F F following the, the most recent committee, where it was mentioned with regards to the L B T T, for example. And you're clearly agreeing with the action plan in front of us to address the repairs and voids is a very positive step for everything in front of us. Uh, I think the waiting list, again, is a wee bit of a deception in some respects. We'll have seven thousand on the waiting list, but we don't have seven thousand homeless. We have many, many in homes out of that seven thousand. And I think they're in relatively good homes personally. I think declaring that housing emergency or is very much just words. I think I'd like to see more action and I think you would agree that a properly planned we have in front of us is action. And I think that that's more important for myself and I think there's been a variety of reasons why, uh, we're in this situation. The cost of living crisis, for example, caused by a government south of the border creating this, uh, chaos we've had over recent years. Humanitarian support, the, the, the issues with private rent, rental sector, uh, with regards to this situation. The challenges with the level of local housing allowance, which is still, even though the the Chancellor mentioned that, that budget recently has failed to provide any further information. And I think the open market acquisition, things we're doing in the city are really positive. We're working with others. We've got an open market acquisition. We've just purchased properties, which is the right thing to do. And as for myself, I'm sitting on a number of, uh, groups within COSLA to make sure we're actually working with the minister and other colleagues in COSLA, uh, from all parties to make sure we can find a solution and a resolution to many of the issues we've got in front of us. And as for the affordable housing, uh, programme, capital programme, as you know, was cut by the Westminster Government coming to Scotland. And for that sort of an impact on our ability from the govern- uh, from the Housing Minister to provide that funding. And I hope they would like to reverse that decision down south to make sure we actually have the funding here uh, available to actually allow us to go forward. I see Consul Shears, I think you were next on my list here, yes?
Thanks very much, Kevina. Um, I mean, we could, we could speak all day about who's to blame, who's doing what, who's fault it is, but at the end of the day, that isn't what's going to get our constituents in better homes, what's going to get our constituents' homes repaired. Um, and I think we're all in agreement across all parties. This is a very good start to the plan and it is a start. And we know there are good things going on. Again, I don't think anyone would disagree with that. But what we really need to do is look at the impact that this, this is having on our city. I'm sure I can speak for most councillors when I say that of my casework, housing is the one that takes up most of our time. It's the most, uh, emotionally invested as well. Again, I'm sure I can speak to most of us when people have been in tears when they talk about their housing issues. Um, it's all well and good to say that the housing list is indeceptive, but the housing list is the housing list. It's seven thousand people. Um, I'm sure the population of Dundee, last I checked, was about a hundred and forty thousand. Happy to be corrected. That's five percent of our citizens on the housing list. And for us to say, okay, things are going on, it's a start. We're burying our heads in the stand, in the sand by saying it's not an emergency, because it is. It is an emergency. It's the biggest challenge facing our city just now, I think. And we can't go on pretending that it's not, saying, yes, we're doing things. And we are doing things. And again, I'm sure I speak for all of us when we say that the housing team are doing excellent work with the, um, funding that they have to get this sorted as best they can. But it's not just words declaring an emergency. It comes with an action plan. We need to show people that this is, this is what we're doing for you. We know the housing situation isn't acceptable at the moment. This is what we are doing. So I'd ask you again to reconsider and accept the motion, please, Kevina.
No, thanks for your comments. I, I, I agree with your saying we shouldn't speak all day about this. I absolutely agree. And I think, as I said earlier, I think words are really un- unimportant here. We really should be doing action. And this is what this is. This is the start of a programme to make sure that we actually do take action. And I think we've got plans in place again. I think we're bringing a forward a housing symposium in the end of June, bringing in major players within the city and beyond to make sure we actually get uh, them all together, find out solutions locally and see what we can do going forward to build towards a local housing strategy, which will be coming to the committee later this year. And I think it's really important and I thank you for acknowledging the good work that the teams are doing within the departments, because I think, again, just declaring this emergency, if you want to call it that, which is basically saying they're not doing their job properly, for example, and various other actions I might take. This is not the priority, the wording. The priority is to make sure we actually get the work done. We get the voice back in. We've got nearly five hundred voids in this, in the report of states. And I think it's important we get that work done, then come back in another time and we can reconsider possibly that, that action taken to see if it's worked, to see what the improvements are. Uh, so I'm still minded at the moment not to take on the actual amendment. I see Consul Malone, you're next.
Thank you, Kevina. Um, I don't think it was anybody intimate any uh, criticism of the hardworking staff who are at the front end of dealing with what is a housing crisis. And maybe Mark, you've decided to suggest, and I'm sure he didn't mean it this way, but to suggest that people that are on the waiting list are actually in good homes. And that was your words. Some of them in good homes. We can't determine whether or not the quality of these homes are good or bad. What we can determine quantitatively is that, as Pete said, our inbox is full of people who are saying they're living in inadequate housing, not homeless necessarily, but in inadequate housing when it comes to meeting the requirements of their family. And I think to suggest that, that somehow that we're, we're moving forward at a great pace and we've, we've managed to kind of bring on board a, a few hundred houses, I don't think is going to offer any comfort to the constituents that are on the phone to me today to say that they're living in intolerable, so they've got a house, but it's intolerable in a sense, it doesn't meet the requirements of them or their family. So I think to suggest, I, I don't, I, I wouldn't accuse you of trying to belittle the experience of, the, the lived and experience of people in the city. But to suggest that people, many people, your words, are living in good homes, I think belies the status of those people who require housing, affordable housing, housing of a quality and housing of a standard that meets the requirements of themselves and their families. And we also know from other reports, such as the antisocial behaviour report, that poor housing is often at the heart of antisocial behaviour. So I think, um, I'd like to focus on your, the positive comments you make. But I think that we have to be realistic. This is a crisis. It may not be a crisis for anybody watching this from the, that's in the chambers. But for people's lived experience, this is a crisis. And we shouldn't shy away from using that language.
Thanks for your comments. Uh, Consul Short, for yourself, please. When you're on mute.
I can't, couldn't get myself off mute there. I'm another one of those ones having a bit of a, a nightmare with my technology tonight. Um, Kevina, I just wanted to, um, perhaps focus a little bit on, um, where we are as a city. Um, twenty six square miles, uh, within these twenty squi- six square miles, um, we have tenures of all types. Um, we've obviously got council housing, we've got private housing, we've got mid-market housing, we've got R S Ls, we've got owner occupiers. And across that, that's housing in the city. Uh, this report today that you're talking about is looking at basically our portfolio. Um, and the focus has to be on housing across the city. And that's where I'm really quite excited about next month and the housing summit. Because I think we have to look at every single one of our constituents and look at what actually is necessary for the city. It's a jigsaw and this is part of the jigsaw. And this is, this is good to see this coming forwards, but we need to be making sure that we're looking at it across the board. Um, do we have churn in the correct places? And talk there about the fact that there's someone living in housing that isn't adequate for their family. Perhaps there's someone who is living in a house that's too big for their family. We need to look at it from a much more holistic point of view, and this is a starting point. But I, um, I see people shaking their heads and it is very much the case of we cannot just look at council housing in isolation. We have to look at all of the housing across all of the city to understand what the needs are and how we take it forwards. This is the way to start and continue on. This committee was pulled together so that housing was very much the focus. The First Minister has talked about his focus on child poverty. Child poverty and the housing that a child lives in are the most important things. So this is definitely a point in, in the right direction. It's not about emergency, it's about getting things done and that's what we're doing.
Thank you and thanks for your comments. I think it's going back again to the report itself, that the housing repairs really like putting four point eight million pounds into doing this. It's obviously a positive direction and positive for every one of our tenants. And again, you're absolutely right. We only have over twelve, twelve and a half thousand, the properties of Dundee, our council. We work with our colleagues and partners and other R S Ls. And it's really important. We all work together and hence the symposium at the end of, uh, June will be very much welcome, I'm sure, by then to have that con- that open conversation and build up for our local housing strategy going forward. Billy McPherson, please.
Uh, can I first of all say that in terms of procedure, Kevina, you've never had a second or for your um, uh, motion to reject the Labour amendment? Perhaps you might just want to go ahead with that before I make my comments?
Thank you very much for reminding me, Billy McPherson. Could I have a second or please? See, Consul Short has agreed to that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, in which case I'll, I'll, I'll proceed. Uh, the Liberal Democrat Group will be supporting, uh, the Labour amendment because it is self-evident that there is a housing emergency in Dundee. Um, it is self-evident, frankly, that there's a housing emergency in large parts of Scotland. If we supported the Labour amendment tonight, we would be the sixth council in Scotland, which includes two largest cities, Edinburgh and Glasgow, and three other councils who have already declared housing emergencies. And the situation across Scotland has the support of the S T U C, Shelter Scotland and the Chartered Institute of Housing. So we are not alone in this. And no one was suggesting, Kevina, about people not doing their job properly. I have the utmost respect for the, uh, team in, on the housing side in, in Dundee, housing and construction. I think they've had a massive challenge since the pandemic. I think we all recognise that. I've got a great deal of faith in the leadership of that team. But the fact remains that we have a very significant and indeed an emergency situation. Um, the, the numbers on the housing waiting list as of today, it's seven thousand six hundred and seventy four people. They will be in all sorts of different circumstances, but a great many will be overcrowded and inadequate circumstances. And Consular Malone, uh, spoke very well about the lived experience of so many people who are, are our, his constituents and my constituents and your constituents. And the fact of the matter is that the cuts in affordable housing grant, and let's not even go into who's to blame, because we could just spend the evening criticizing one another. There's nothing to be gained from that. The reality, however, is that that will not assist and not help. And I think that, um, I, I, I actually asked for the, um, the, um, housing waiting list figures for the last five years. And we've made no inroads in that time, no inroads. In fact, the figure on the first of May twenty twenty two, two years ago, uh, from now, was six thousand nine hundred and fifty nine. So in other words, it's seven hundred up in terms of people on the waiting list than it was two years ago. That's a, that's a worrying situation by all standards. And I commend the officers for bringing home this report today on repairs and relets. It's very necessary and it will make a difference to an extent. But I think Bailey Keenan, I think it was mentioned the fact that even if you, uh, uh, resolve the whole relets issue, you're not going to tackle the underlying total issue of the numbers of people who are seeking um, adequate housing, um, in, in the city. So for that reason, I think, uh, we, we can't afford complacency in this. I'm not suggesting anybody in particular is. But I think we do have to send a signal about the seriousness of the situation um, in the city in terms of, uh, housing. And for that reason, we will be strongly supporting the Labour amendment tonight. Thank you, Kevina.
No, thanks for your comments. I think no one's taken anything, uh, for granted here. I think I'm, I'm sure everyone would agree that the team do an exceptional job under the challenges they do have, challenges much of what's been put upon us by external measures. But I think this, again, going back to the actual report in front of us, is a step in the right direction. I think the wording between declaring or whatever you want to declare is rather important in this particular case. We need to go on with the work and the work's really the important part of this. Actions are more important. Uh, Billy Sawyers, please.
Yeah, thanks, Kevina. I'll be very brief. Um, I was speaking about pressures in housing to a colleague, a former councillor and a neighbouring local authority who was first elected in nineteen eighty. And, you know, it's not about putting the blame on who did what or who didn't do what. It's analysing the problem and looking at what's created greater numbers of public housing and what's reduced numbers of public housing. And my colleague who was elected in nineteen eighty said, it's quite clear it was the Thatcher government and the right to buy. Because if I remember correctly, about that time, Dundee had probably more than twice the number of council houses than it does now. And that absolutely decimated the stock in Dundee. You only have to wander about some of our housing estates and you can almost tell which of the properties are now private rented out. Because they're invariably, not always, and there are some very, very good landlords in the city, but there are a number who just let the properties deteriorate, racking the rent and frankly, don't really care about their tenants. And that, that is a huge issue and it acts as a, a downward, um, downward pressure on a number of streets in the city. So I think we have to look at that. We then have to reflect that, and there's been a bit of reflection in the past week or so, it's twenty five years since the Scottish Parliament was set up. And of course, there were devolution of a number of powers, not as many as you and I would like, Kevina, but amongst them was, was housing. And, um, within that, powered over the right to buy. And for eight years, Kevina, we had a Labour libdame, Scottish executive. Lib Dem Scottish executive that did nothing, nothing whatsoever about the right to buy. It just sat there and they said, oh, Tory policy, oh, well, we're not going to do anything about that. And as you'll remember, Convenor, it took the election of an SNP government to abolish the right to buy. So I think when we're looking at causes and effects, maybe abolishing the right to buy has been quite important. And reflecting back as well, and people say, yes, there were lots of housing association houses built, and I appreciate that, but we're talking about councils at the moment. And in that eight year period, with the Labour Lib Dem Scottish executive, there were six council houses built in the whole of Scotland. That's less than one a year. So if people want to talk about problems with council housing, maybe they want to look in the mirror, Convenor.
Thank you very much. And, uh, very many pertinent points in the situation and the issues we're in at the moment. So thank you very much for that, Billy Sawyers. Uh, just to move on, uh, we'll just go to the vote. Elaine, please.
Thanks, Convenor. So the motion by the convenor, seconded by councillor Short, is that the report be agreed and submitted. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Crook Short, shall is as circulated. And I'll now take the vote. Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Del Nachler.
Oh, sorry about that. My computer's playing up. Um, the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Soares.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
The motion, please.
Councillor Smith.
The motion.
Councillor Troland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
So I've got IT problems. You may want to come back to Elaine.
I will do, Convenor. Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh. Thank you. Councillor McCarvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The very, very pertinent amendment.
Councillor Spillan.
Amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright. Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton.
Amendment, Convenor.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
And councillor Crookshank.
Councillor Crookshank's put in the chat, Elaine, that she's supporting the amendment. She's lost connection again.
It's fine. Thanks, Convenor. So that is fifteen for the motion and thirteen for the amendment. So then the motion is carried.
Right. Thank you very much. Uh, can we move on to the next item, please?
Next item, three sourcing strategy for the procurement of works to install retrofit upgrades in the Llathon area. And you have the report before you.
Thank you. It's quite clearly what the report is. So just move on to any comments. Uh, councillor Coleman, please.
Sorry, Mr. Convenor, I pressed my button too soon. It's meant to be for the following item.
Oh, it's okay. Oh, sorry. It says second for my apologies. Uh, my item three. Any, I see no questions or comments. So we'll take the report as read. Thank you. Elaine?
Item four, reinforced aerated autoclaved concrete in homes in Dundee. And you have the report before you.
Thank you again. It's quite clear what this is all about. The rack in homes and it became clear there was an issue with the type of building material elsewhere in the country. The council acted very quickly to scope out the extent of issues here in the city. And having carried out detailed exercise, we have a plan in place to deal with what has been found on a priority basis. There's also letters sent to both owners and tenants of the affected properties. Uh, before we move on, I'd just like to thank, uh, the teams in both city development and housing for their work in making sure this work was carried out. So I think it was very important and very pertinent to make sure tenants and owners and occupiers were, uh, understood the situation clearly, uh, going forward. So thank you very much to both teams. Uh, I'll go back to councillor Coleman first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Convenor. With regard to the information issued to tenants and also to owners and mixed tenure blocks, it indicates costs have not yet been determined. Owners and mixed tenure blocks will naturally be very concerned about the possible level of their share for video works in the future. And I'd be grateful for some reassurances about keeping these people updated and assurances about any costs in the future being recovered only in relation to owners' financial means, given that this will be a worry for the owners concerned.
Thank you for the question. I'll go with Mr. Boyle first, if you want to take it or pass on, Tony.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Coleman. Yeah. As the report indicates, the costs have still to be determined. As soon as we've got more information, we can, uh, advise further as requested.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay, Daniel?
Yes, I look forward to hearing it more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Malone, please.
Yeah, my, my comments were very, very similar to, to Daniel's. I mean, I had a significant number of constituents at my surgery on Friday afternoon, each of them carrying a letter from the, the council. Um, but it was keen in absence of, um, the kind of drilling down into the different situations that people have got. Uh, it was a very generic letter and it caused some concerns. I referred to this report, uh, said it would be coming forward towards committee. And the report itself contains a lot of good information, but I think that the, and I understand it, the need to get information out to the elector, uh, to the public as soon as possible, has led to the issuing of very generic, uh, correspondence, which has caused a great deal of concern. I'd like to thank Tony in particular and his team for the rapid way they responded to one of the, the, um, constituents who asked me to pass on her gratitude for the speedy kind of clarification. What my question really is, is other information, will other information be coming forward of a more detailed nature? And I'm sure it will be, given the nature of the report. And how soon might, um, constituents understand, learn to understand their particular circumstances? And like Daniel, it's about kind of how much is it going to cost and, um, how the, the, the question of cost will be impacted on the, the, the residents. Appreciate that. Still work under, uh, underway, but I just thought that the generic letter that went out has caused unnecessary, um, anxiety amongst many of the, the, the people who are going to be affected by this. But again, I'd like to thank Tony and his team for the rapid response that they had in terms of dealing with a constituent inquiry today. And I look forward to getting the assurances, which I'm sure I will, that such that information of a more detailed nature and a more specific nature will be available in the future, the near future, hopefully.
Yep. Thanks for that. I think it's important. We actually did send letters out to all buildings and all tenants and occupiers, uh, because I think that because of the press related to rack in general across the country, and I think it was important, we actually get the surveys done. The team did a fantastic job making sure we actually got all that done, uh, to make sure that there was no one put at risk here. And I think that's the important part, as you would appreciate as well, councillor Malone. I think it's important we actually make sure, uh, tenants and owners in these mixed tenure blocks especially are safe and everyone else is safe who has a rack in their buildings. And I'd say that's, I think the team have done a great job there. But I'll see if, uh, Mr. Well wants to come back with any further comments.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks for the comments. Uh, councillor Malone. Uh, due, due to the na- nature of practice, understandably, an issue where residents who have been contacted will be, uh, understandably concerned. The report notes there's an ongoing inspection regime and it will be dependent on each specific property and the work that colleagues within city engineers do, that as to what remedies are required. The report indicates that three point one B, the further tender reports will be coming forward, uh, when more costs are known and that will be presented to future committees. And I'm happy to provide that assurance to councillor Malone that residents impacted will be advised in due course. Thanks, Convenor.
Charlie, I see you want to come back. So you come back.
No, it was just, uh, uh, I, I was trying to be as positive about this as I possibly can. Well, I can understand the need for very speedy correspondence, given the fact this is not something the weekly control and house, the information was out there in the general public. This is Scotland wide, UK wide issue. Um, I just felt that the nature of the correspondence can perhaps have led to increased anxiety. I appreciate Tony's comment that further information will be made available to people of a more specific nature. I think that'll go a long way, but I think that there's a, and maybe a need just to, um, notify the, the, the general public that there are, that there will be ongoing correspondence between those affected by the rack, um, of a more detailed and specific nature. So welcome, uh, Tony's information. Uh, welcome the, the comments you've made, Convenor, in terms of the need for experience. Um, but sometimes we get the information out, which we're required to get out, only to find out that people have got concerns because they get what is effectively. I mean, I looked at, I had four different circumstances present themselves to me on Friday and each individual had the same letter. And, um, that was adding to the anxiety. So I'm grateful to Tony for his comeback and, um, look forward to seeing future correspondence of a more detailed and direct nature.
Okay, thank you. And again, as a positive, there's going to be continual inspections, which is very reassuring. I'm sure you'll agree as well, uh, for the, the tenants, owner occupiers who are in the mixed tenure and the cottages we have going forward. Thank you. Uh, Bailey Keenan, please.
Yeah, just, um, obviously in relation to the inspection regime, it's obviously a, a seventy thousand pound inspection regime across all the, all the, the, the blocks that there is there, uh, including owner occupiers. But if it's an owner occupier that's in, falls within the six month category, then they can look for the costs, no doubt, of two inspections a year until such things as obviously there is, uh, remedial work done. So obviously as soon as that's known and what the inspection regime and the cost of that is, I think it's important that we let people know what they can expect in bills going forward. I think it would also be useful if, uh, officers would agree to make themselves available to meet with tenants as this starts to roll out and, uh, you know, set their minds at rest about the, the sort of knowings as they are. So as that, uh, you know, w- w- we can, uh, keep individuals informed best we can, especially as, uh, uh, if, if they're likely to receive inspection bills going forward for a few years. Uh, I think it's only fair that, uh, we try to keep people involved and try to keep them involved about the type of inspection, whether it's an intrusive inspection of holes needing to be drilled or hatches needing to be cut so as these things can be seen. So that, that would be useful going forward if officers were prepared to meet up with people.
I'm sure that would be probably acceptable. Make sure we are, we've got to keep them fully informed, there's no doubt about that, every circumstance, especially with the, any issues they might find as well on any additional cost. But I'm sure that would happen. But I'll just confirm up with Tony just to make sure.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Yes, yes, of course. As soon as we know more about this, it'll be ongoing communications with residents and we'll make staff available, lead staff meeting with our family earlier on today, but we'll continue with that going forward.
Okay. See, no, and, uh, then we'll have a lot, cheers for that. Okay. I see no further questions or comments. So we'll take the report as read. Thank you. Uh, next one, Elaine, please.
Thanks, Convenor. Item five, sourcing strategies by head of design and property, and this is for approval.
Yeah. And just in front of us, quite clear what the report says. So I'll just move straight to questions. Um, councillor Creighton, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Um, having raised, um, the very issue of wifi in sheltered housing complexes at committee a few weeks ago, um, I'm pleased to see the procurement of this contained in the report. Um, from the list in appendix two, it appears that all shell, shelter lounges are included. Um, but I just want to confirm if this is the case. Um, also kind of what is the timeframe for installation, um, on all the complexes? Just because I've had a few residents ask me about this.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, probably go to Olga in this case. Olga?
Yes, to confirm, all sheltered housing developments are included in this programme. We do not have the time scales as yet. Um, obviously that's something we'll consider once the outcome of the, the tender is known. And we will get back to elected members and residents to know the time scale when it's in place.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay, Michael?
Yep. Excellent. Thank you.
Right. Thanks very much for that. And I see no further questions or comments. So we'll take that one as agreed. Thank you. Elaine?
Item six, tenders received by head of property and design, and this is for approval.
Again, number of tenders in front of us for heating kitchens, bathrooms, window replacements, roof replacements, disable adaptations, uh, flat roofing issues. And just looking for approval. I see Bailey McPherson, please.
Uh, thanks, Convenor. A question regarding window replacements. And I'm pleased to see that there is a project in there that will benefit around forty houses. Uh, councillor Creighton and I had a meeting with a group of tenants in part of our ward today and were grateful for the officer input, uh, excellent officer input into that meeting. We actually got on to the subject of window replacement because those of us that are longer in the tooth and fat, it goes back prior to the time I was on the council, there was a very significant win window replacement, uh, programme in the early nineteen nineties, uh, right across the city. Um, now these windows are now reaching the end of their thirty year life, frankly. And we're now in a situation where, um, windows, uh, in many of our, um, um, a- areas across the city will be requiring replacement in the coming years. Uh, uh, not for tonight, but I'd be very grateful if, uh, officers could circulate what the specific proposals in relation to, um, particular schemes across the city are for window replacement program during the lifetime of the current, um, housing capital plan. Cause I'm just very conscious of the fact that we now have an awful lot of thirty year old windows, thirty plus year old windows out there. And I think it would just be useful to provide reassurance, um, to all elected members as to how, um, the department is tackling that. Uh, thanks you, Convenor.
Yeah, I think that'd be no problem at all. I think everyone will be updated as required. And I think, uh, we'll bring Olga in. I think there's a, you mentioned the capital plan earlier, Olga. So we'll just review now as well.
Yes, Convenor. So I mentioned the fact that we're reviewing the capital programme for twenty four, twenty five, due to the fact that we have shifted some of the programmes around to, um, facilitate the recovery programme. Um, as members will also see from a following item, um, when, when we did our consultation for the rent rise last year, the issue of windows was a priority for tenants. It's something I'm taking on board for twenty four, twenty five, but will also need to be looked at in terms of future programmes as well to determine what the appropriate replacement cycle is. So that is something that's certainly on their agenda.
Okay, thank you. And it's good to know it's on the agenda again. Uh, is it okay, Billy McPherson?
Yeah, perfectly happy with that. And I know that Olga and colleagues will, will indeed keep us updated. So grateful for the response. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Elaine?
Thanks, Convenor. That concludes the agenda.
Uh, thank you, everyone. And, uh, next committee.
Thank you, Convenor. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
Evening, folks. Willie, we'll just kick on with the agenda.
If, uh, thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Any declarations anyone wishes to share at this point? I don't think there is. So we'll take that as a no. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There have been no declarations. That then takes you on to item two, Royal Bank of Scotland Kingsbury Circus Branch. This item's been placed on the agenda by councillor Coleman.
Councillor Coleman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Convenor. I'm pleased to bring this motion to committee this evening, especially after such strong, uh, support from the public for the campaign to prevent the closure of the branch. I hope that we're able to proceed in a unanimous, uh, as a unanimous chamber in respect of this motion. Uh, bluntly, is, you know, there has been no prior warning and, and no consultation with local residents. And yet again, RBS are acting unilaterally in a, what is currently described as a secretive manner. Anyone would think the bank doesn't actually want customers and frankly, doesn't seem to really care about the needs of their customers. Uh, they talk about customer needs, but clearly they have no interest at all in the social responsibility of catering for those who do not use online banking. Not everybody wants to, not everybody can, and indeed not everybody can afford to. An internet connection is quite expensive and perhaps it's not affordable for every household. For me, it is laughable that in their email, they talk about wanting a sustainable branch network and then in the same email say, uh, drive to your nearest bank ten minutes away. I mean, beggars believe to talk about being sustainable and encouraging drive, driving cars in the same breath. Frankly, you know, it's a lack of understanding for Dundee. It won't be ten minutes by the time you to walk.
Frankly, you know, it's a lack of understanding for Dundee. It won't be ten minutes by the time you have to walk back and walk to the place in the city centre. Local proprietors have expressed dismay at the decision. And Stephen Tosh, who operates hospitality businesses in the area, uh, said it may result in taking less cash as a form of payment for his businesses, and that would have a serious impact on customers. The NatWest Group made it, our operating profit is six billion in twenty twenty three. So for me, it's simply nonsense to suggest that the running of this branch needs to cease for operational needs. I would appeal to their sense of social responsibility to continue providing services for everyone, especially when we bear in mind, and it really should be borne in mind by RBS in particular, who it was who bailed them out in two thousand eight, two thousand nine to the tune of a whopping forty five and a half billion. And that was the taxpayer, and they have a duty to serve them properly. And, and so Bailey McPherson will second me.
Thanks very much, uh, councillor Coleman. Well, I, I'll come to Bailey McPherson in a second, but just to say, I'm happy to second you. Uh, Daniel, I think, uh, what you've said very eloquently there is all the key points, and I think I'm very minded both as a local councillor, uh, as a customer of RBS, actually, that's not necessarily my branch, but it's not the point. That I expect a degree of service that I think we've all become very much accustomed to and changes in terms of what we've seen over a number of years, not just by RBS, but a number of, uh, national banks who, as you rightly point out, uh, have benefited from taxpayer interventions to support their endeavours to continue uh, to deliver their services. And without that type of intervention, uh, they would have went bankrupt long ago, and they shouldn't forget that whatsoever. I'm also very mindful of the point that you make in terms of the number of local businesses, and I was always uh, very mindful of the fact that when I did attend that branch to deposit or take out money, there was always a significant number of, uh, small and medium enterprises that were using that particular branch uh, to drop off money or to uh, have change, et cetera, uh, obtain change for their businesses. And now that has, uh, well, through these changes, that option will not be available. And then, uh, I suppose one final point is also thinking about the nature of customers that will be using these services. I was caught short at the RBS, uh, branch in the city centre by five minutes because it closes at half four. And thinking about the number of people that are in employment who might not be able to, uh, go to the banks before this. And the options now are very limited. By the time you traverse and access uh, the central bank office, for example, for RBS, by the time you've parked up and walked to the branch, it's probably already closed. Uh, and the reality is that no matter how much you can do online, there needs to be that balance struck. So I'm more than happy to second your motion, I think, and I'm sensing there'll be a broad, uh, support for this, just as there was with previous motions that have been brought forward for other bank enclosure. Uh, and really this continued erosion of those services, banking services that people really do rely on, uh, has to stop and it has to stop now. So with that, I will bring in, uh, other members. Bailey McPherson, I'll come to you next.
Uh, thanks, convenor. I'm not remotely precious as to who sickens councillor Coleman, because I think the important thing in this is that uh, we have uni- a unanimity within the council in opposing yet another, uh, branch closure. Uh, when I was first elected to the council in my own area, there was a Royal Bank branch at Ninewell's Hospital, one in Perth Road. Now, many of the constituents in the northern part of my ward uses the one in Lochie. All gone, all gone. Not only that, every single branch that existed in Perth Road, uh, over and above the Royal Bank of Scotland, all gone. Uh, Royal Bank of Scotland has systematically, frankly, gone round the city, closing all its branches. Um, if, in the fairly recent past, stops well, most recently Brody Ferry, now Kingsway Circus. To a point that its only face-to-face, um, uh, branch, if you like, will be its Dundee chief office. It's, we should really name it, rename it Dundee Only Office, because that's all it will be left with. And the point really, uh, and you've made it, as has councillor Coleman, and it's about, um, um, having services for customers, particularly for those that do not want um, to use electronic means, uh, telephone banking or internet banking. Uh, but also for local businesses, councillor Coleman alluded to one local business that will be affected. And let's face it, I mean, I've been in the Kingsway Circus branch quite a lot over the years. It's always busy. And quite frankly, it serves a very large number of customers in the area north of the Kingsway, in the west side of, of Dundee. And I think its loss will be keenly felt. Um, I think it's really important to send the message to the banks, and in this case, obviously the NatWest Group, that it's not acceptable to continue this retrenchment away from, uh, customer service. And therefore I hope that we will have, uh, cross party and all councillor support tonight in, uh, the, the, the campaign to keep the Kingsway Circus branch of Royal Bank of Scotland open. Thank you, convenor.
Thanks very much for those remarks. Uh, Bailey Keenan next.
I, I suppose a lot of things have been said. I'm, I'm happy to, uh, uh, endorse the motion as well and, uh, and lend, uh, what I can towards the campaign that Daniel's running. Um, you know, less than a mile at each side of that, there's been about four branches shut or different, different banks. You know, beggars' belief that we build them out and, uh, the, the bit that we're seemingly forgetting is the, the, the customer service, but for those who paid for them. Uh, you know, so I think it's appalling that they just continue to cut banks and do the, uh, the service and it is a busy bank, uh, regularly used. Uh, obviously any time I pass that bit of the Kingsway, there's, there's individuals getting out of their car and going into there, probably because other banks have closed and it's made that one um, brought more trade to that one in particular, but happy to support the motion.
Thanks very much, uh, for those comments. Uh, Bailey Scott next.
Thanks, convenor. I'm, I'm happy to support the motion as well because we do need to protect access to bank branches for those who need them. Uh, and over the years I've been on the council, there have been dozens of items put on the agenda opposing, um, bank branch closures or post office closures, and I put two or three of those on to an agenda myself. But the outcome of all of these unfortunately has been closures. Uh, I don't think we've ever been able to save any of them, no, no, no matter how big a campaign we ran. So I think our officers really need to start looking at alternatives should, um, further closures occur. Because I know some communities have, um, community bankers who go in to serve a local area where there are no bank branches to give advice on financial matters, and some of the communities also have, um, uh, 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 banking hubs where different banks go in on a rotational basis to do financial transactions in a local area for those who still need to do cash transactions and be helped with financial transactions. So while I'm all supportive of trying to keep branches open, I think as a council, we need to start looking at how we provide or facilitate alternatives for those people who do need to still have a branch of some sort.
Thanks very much for that, Bailey Scott. I would just add to what you've said there. I think one of the challenges and perhaps something else that we need to pick up is the criteria around banking hubs. I remember having a conversation with my colleague councillor Anderson in respect of a bank closure in her community, in which we were exploring whether a banking hub might be a feasible option, but the strict criteria that's UK wide in terms of, uh, a banking hub only being permissible or or certainly endorsed where, um, it's, I think, beyond a two mile radius from uh, another banking venture means that that's quite challenging in a geography like Dundee, but it notwithstanding your point, it's still something that we should push on and perhaps we also need to look at a bit of a campaign around the criteria for that to make sure uh, that where it's appropriate and where it's useful from a community perspective, that we can explore that in more detail. Uh, I'll come to councillor Shears next.
Thanks, convenor. Um, just to comment, uh, wish councillor Coleman the best of luck. And I had my own fight with them when they closed, uh, the bank within the ferry. And it's because you've got a full head of hair because you will be pulling your hair out and dealing with them. And also something that I think we should be considering as well was, these banks don't care. They do not care about communities that without any kind of impunity. The only thing that they care about is, um, their profits at the end of the day. And so at what point do we actually reconsider our relationship with the Royal Bank of Scotland? Given this is yet another community they are pulled a bank from with no, no, uh, consequence whatsoever. So at what point do we as a council consider our own relationship and hit them where it really hurts, which is how much money's in their coffers?
Thanks, councillor Shears. I think that's certainly something that we've picked up before. I think the challenge at this point in time experience tells us that unfortunately, um, the number of closures, I, I can't, I'm struggling to think of a single bank that hasn't closed, uh, uh, one of their sites in Dundee over the last few years. And I think that's where the challenge comes because they all need to recognise the incredibly important value that those, um, venues have to the broader community. But point well made. I'll come to councillor Malone next.
Uh, thank you, convenor. Um, I'm always minded to support the comments of a Tory former Prime Minister Ted Heath when he said, what we are seeing is the unacceptable face of capitalism. But I might not go that far, not at this meeting, but maybe at a different meeting. Um, but what we are seeing is the unacceptable face of business that sets itself against sustainability. To, I mean, I, I look at Lochie and the Lochie Ward, not just in Lochie, this geographic area. And we've got nothing, as Bailey McPherson said, we've got nothing, we've got no banking facilities. And to say to people who are infirm, who lack the means of transport, that they have to find their way into the city centre to actually see face-to-face someone to help them with their inquiry, I think it's just insulting beyond belief. These banks care about shareholders and shareholder value primarily, first and foremost. They do not care about the sustainability of our communities. And we talk about the twenty minute community and we, we talk about the need for reducing the transmissions associated with unnecessary travel. Keeping a bank presence in these areas, we eliminate all that. It's unacceptable. It's causing, it's setting us back as a, a, a local authority and what we're trying to do to create more sustainable and a more green environment. And I think they need to be called out. And I think, I'm hap- I'm delighted actually to see the level of, um, unanimity here. It's, um, of a, a kind of political nature that I'm not used to seeing, uh, within the city council, but I look forward to everybody's support for Daniel's motion, and I'm sure you'll get it. But like councillor Shears, I, I, I kind of hold back my optimism to a certain extent, but that's no reason for us not to communicate in the strongest possible terms that the people of Dundee find it unacceptable that financial services institutions could act in this way. It's wholly inappropriate and it goes against any principle of sustainability that you might find in RBS's sustainability report. And I've read it, you should read it. It's a fantasy when it comes to things like we're exp- uh, issues that we're addressing this evening.
Thank you very much, councillor Malone. And I think the final contribution on this item is councillor Cordell, and then I'll come back to yourself, Dan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and obviously I'm very supportive of councillor Coleman's motion. Um, but it, it does seem that we're always being reactive to these events and it's really following on a bit from councillor Malone's, um, comments as well. And I wonder whether we shouldn't be considering as a council, writing to those banks and building societies who still have a presence on our high street to reiterate, reiterate our position that we don't support closures. Um, and we don't support closures because they're vital to our shopping districts and to our communities. Um, you may have seen that Lloyd's TSB have just announced another tranche of closures. Fortunately, they're not in Dundee in the next couple of years, but you know, the way the wind is blowing, we've seen what's been happening. So I would just like to see us as a council maybe be on the front foot a bit more. And I don't know if that is something that you could consider, Chair, or if councillor Coleman could accommodate somehow here, but it's just a comment. And if it's not applicable to councillor Coleman's motion, I wonder if we could consider it as a separate thing for us to do as a committee. Thank you.
Thanks for the suggestion, councillor Cordell. I'll perhaps go to, uh, the mover of the motion to see what his view is. So Daniel, I'll come back to you, your thoughts on that and anything else you wish to add.
Thank you, Mr. Convenor. I'm, I'm very grateful for everybody's support. I mean, very strong words of support and I think it really sends a strong message to the, the, those in charge of RBS. Uh, I think in terms of, um, Deputy Provost Cordell's comments, I, I take on board them. I think I'd be hesitant to dilute the, the reports of this motion, but I certainly would support anything that would come forward or an, an action along those lines. And that would come forward separately. I think that would give it more meaning if it comes forward separately. And that's where I would stand on that one.
Yeah, thanks very much. I'm happy to pick that up and, and take that forward, uh, in that vein as well. And then I think it covers all the particular aspects that I've seen raised, so thank you all. I, I see no other, uh, members wishing to come in, uh, and contribute to this, so I think, um, we have reached absolute consensus. So I'll just check if there is anyone disagreeing. No, on that basis, um, that's unanimous agreement. Thank you all very much. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. It takes you onto item three, improving services through listening to customers and service users. You asked to give the recommendations.
Yeah, this report obviously highlights a number of areas where improvements have been made on the back of feedback. Uh, and again, it's really important that we reflect some of those areas uh, in terms of the improvements that have been made on the back of that feedback as well. And appendix one just sets out some of those key areas. And I think there's, there's a number of note, and I'm sure everybody will pick out the ones that are of most interest to them, I suppose. But thinking about some of the involvement that I've had with, for example, the Fairness Leadership Panel, the Dundee Food Network in terms of some of the feedback they have provided and looking to change procurement and the way in which, or the items we identify, uh, for use, changes to fuel well support on the back of some of that feedback as well. The introduction of the faith covenant and obviously, uh, changes that help deliver hope point. And again, that's an ongoing piece of work, uh, in terms of the importance of that, but also reflecting the needs of users and adapting uh, the, the services that are being provided. So I think on the whole, that's all really positive. Uh, there's always, uh, room for improvement, of course, and it's an ongoing process of learning, listening and adapting uh, as the case may be as well. So I'll come to, uh, comments. Uh, Bailey McPherson?
Uh, thanks, convenor. I have to say I'm very impressed with a lot of the information in this, uh, showing a real willingness to listen to areas of potential improvement, uh, about the quality of our services and frankly, the quality of the staff of Dundee City Council and teams that help to deliver, uh, these. So, uh, uh, you know, very positive feeling reading through that report. I think there are a couple of areas, uh, and it's not specifically regarding this report, but if we are looking at improving services through listening to our customers and service users, whilst I accept what I'm now going to say is anecdotal, it is repeated by a great many constituents, and I'm sure not only by my constituents, but I'm sure other councillors will hear this as well. And that is, uh, the number of constituents who, from time to time, say they have great difficulty getting through to particular um, team members or, or staff on the phone. And I am fairly confident that that is largely not through phoning customer services in the main number. Uh, I've had stats from the head of customer services and IT, which I think bear that out. That, um, but nonetheless, I think that's an area where renewed focus, I think, would be helpful. And I think also, I had an exchange quite a number of months ago with the chief executive about the need for dropping appointments. And actually, there was a positive reaction to that with, uh, um, two half days a week at the box office in the city square. But I do feel that we have to be mindful, it's, it's slightly touching on the previous item actually. We have to be mindful about the, uh, customers who do not want to go digital and do want to speak to a real live human being face-to-face. And I think, uh, you know, continuing focus in that area would be, um, very much appreciated. That said, I'm not trying to make negative comments here at all. I think the, um, this report does show uh, the real willingness to listen, uh, the real willingness to ensure that we have a quality, a good quality of service. And I thank the staff and all the teams concerned for, uh, delivering that quality of service. Uh, thank you, convenor.
Thanks very much. No, all very valid, uh, comments, Fraser, and things that I think elected members generally have probably raised. I think it's important to say that that is, uh, again, another issue that that's where ongoing feedback is really important to make sure that we're adapting those services. And I myself was in contact, uh, very recently in terms of, uh, looking at some of those issues and understanding the approach that's being taken. And I think the other thing I would probably reference is, certainly I've seen at a local level, this drive to, towards actually delivering more of those services in the community. So actually, rather than the kind of front desk being in the, uh, the city centre, for example, a lot more outreach work, some of which, for example, Morgan Academy is a great example of that, uh, but beyond that, within our community centres, et cetera. So I think it's recognising that there's different approaches there, but ultimately the goal is the best possible service that we can provide and, and trying to continue to enhance that. And I know that officers uh, are, are aware of, uh, both the concerns and the opportunities in that, uh, that space to make sure that we're driving improvements and listening to those responses. So thanks very much, Fraser, for your comments. Uh, I'll come- So thanks very much, Fraser, for your comments. I'll come to councillor McHugh next.
Thank you, convenor. Like Bailey McPherson, I welcome many of the initiatives included in this report. It's really reassuring to read that the council's making strides to engage and respond to citizens. There's a lot of good work here, and all those involved should be congratulated. Our people really are our best asset. I'm concerned, though, that while the report is specifically around improvements that have been made to council services as a result of listening to the views of customers and services users over the last year, some of these improvements relate to listening that was done prior to then, or it's not clear when or how the listening exercise took place. I can let officers have specific examples of items out with the timescale, out with the meeting. But I wonder, I wonder also how some of these improvements listed in the appendix fit into the responding to citizens feedback category. One point three in the appendix under performance describes a report on performance. No evidence of listening and responding over the past year. One point nine, integrated impact assessments. I'd be really interested to hear how customers and service users were able to influence improvements to an internal management tool. Two point six, teacher-booker supply booking system. Again, I can't see how service users or customers had any input into this internal process. Infant pledge actually refers to future feedback from parents once the tool is further developed. Four point five, IT talks about work to improve online access for customers, but no information on how customers fed into the discussion. I'm passionate about engaging with our citizens. So what I'm really trying to say here is that the report is quite specific. Examples to evidence how the council is listening and responding should relate specifically to that purpose and should fall within the timeframe.
Thanks very much for the question, Dorothy. There might be some more detailed officers wish to come back without with the beating just because of the nature of some of the specific elements that you asked there. But I'll come to the head of Chief Executive Service, Andrea, perhaps for an initial response, Andrea?
Yeah, so obviously, the examples are gathered across services. So what we will do is just make sure that we make it clearer what exactly the input was from customers. And we'll double-check some of the timeframes, just in case we're running over financial years. So I'm happy to take on board any improvements around that. In relation to individual ones, I'm happy to discuss those with councillor McHugh and give her any additional information on those.
Thanks, Andrea. You happy with that?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
And nothing else that that question and response there just demonstrates that, you know, there's a point being raised and there's the council officer listening and adapting the report accordingly for next year, I'm sure. So thanks very much for all your comments. Can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, thank you, convenor. The remaining item is considered confidential and the committee wish to deal with this in the usual way.
Members happy to deal with this in the usual way. Rand, thank you very much. I'll take that as agreed, and that is the business. Thank you all very much. Have a great week. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.